In your opinion, on evidence of opera.
County Board of Supervisors October fifteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places and posted on the county website on October tenth, two thousand and twenty four. In addition, on Thursday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty four, at four seventeen P. M., the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email.
Cause her.
I believe that meets the requirements of notice.
Hey, you roll hall.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Bornall.
Here.
Pamela Garvey.
If she hears us.
She's here.
You're muted, but.
I'm here, sorry. Trouble unmuting the mic. There we go. I'm here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Rock.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Francis Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arkham.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonner Prize.
Here.
We have fifteen out of fifteen.
Please join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasantly to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every interest for all.
Excellent. Then portion of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented. I don't see any.
I would like. So on the agenda, could we put off twelve, B, C, and D at the committee of the whole for discussion also? So that they can be discussed a little more. It'll be resolution thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. And just put them under the committee of the whole.
Which ones do you want?
From number twelve?
Yes.
B, C, and D. And put them under the committee of the whole, too, for discussion.
Just A and B?
B, C, and D. A is, A is pretty much we have to do no matter what.
B, D, and E.
B, C, D.
B, C.
Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one. How's that?
Right here.
You got it. And just put them under for discussion also, committee of the whole.
And I note that in approval.
Did we have a second?
Second.
Accept and change. All in favor?
Aye.
Code, same sign. Need a motion on the adoption of the consent agenda.
Should we make a motion?
Second. Motion made in the second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? No public comment? Anybody upstairs?
Nope.
Being none, we'll move on to number eight. Committee has the whole discussion. Need a motion.
I'll make the motion to go into the committee of the whole.
Second. Motion made in the second and any discussion other than twelve, B, C, and D? All in favor?
Aye.
Code, same sign. Starting off with the grandstand. What's the status on the grandstand?
I have passed out the offer that was presented to the General Government Committee last week. This offer here, the offer right now, they extend is to contribute four hundred thousand dollars towards the construction of a new grandstand facility. They have two hundred thousand dollars paid upon completion of the finished turnkey facility with all necessary support of the structure. The remaining two hundred thousand shall be amortized over max fifteen years of payments to start. Year following the initial completion of payment, regardless of the schedule, payment shall not exceed eighteen thousand. Offer will expire December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. Right now, we do have a closed session on here to discuss this further in detail. Would you'd like to hold off on that till that point, being that it is an offer and pushing with it? If you'd like to do that, then move on to the discussion of the town of Balsam Lake Rural Addressing Petitions.
Any discussion on the postponement of it, the recommendation thereof?
I recommend that. But we do is put it all together.
What did you say?
I say I just, we don't need to actually motion. I said that.
No, I'm just saying a discussion on it.
I recommend that we do that.
All right. We got a discussion on the town of Balsam Lake and the rural addressing petitions.
Just a little bit on that. South Deer Lake Circle was, these two were two new road segments that had petitions. Shady Grove, Shady Grove Shores had no signatures on the petition that they brought forward. It was just added to another one, the name. South Deer Lake Circle is comprised of both A and B addressing, so it would fall underneath the, be re-addressed. The recommendation out of Public Works, Public Safety was to deny these petitions.
Okay, any discussion regards to that?
I'm gonna ask a question if I could. Is, is it our ordinance that we do bring this to the full board or the committee can't just deny it at their level or whatever, or what?
Correct. So when a petition gets filed, it goes to the clerk. The clerk puts it on in front of Public Safety, Public Works for their consideration. Public Safety, Public Works reviews the petitions and makes findings, basically reviews the evidence presented. After they review, they vote to send it to the board for final decision. They send it to the board either with recommendation that the petition be granted or with recommendation that the petition be denied. So all Public Safety, Public Works does is listen to the information and send it to the board for final consideration. The, the committee's action is simply sending it to you with or without recommendation, basically. Or, well, it's always with recommendation. It's just recommendation to grant it or recommendation to deny.
Okay.
The board has final decision.
On that, okay.
Chair, may I ask what the committee's recommendations were?
What?
May I ask what the, if the committee made any recommendations on the petition?
The committee didn't see this one.
Also.
Yep. Yep. The committee saw both these. The recommendation was to deny.
Okay.
Oh, they, there's these two that weren't even close to conforming with our rules.
It was a three to two.
Okay. Well, okay, then. We'll move to, any more discussion on these?
So before we move on, I just want to highlight for the board that discussion was had at the committee. It was highlighted, I believe, by Chief Deputy Burrows, who was in attendance. He just reminded the committee of the recommendation and statements made by the sheriff, both at the board meeting as well as at the Public Safety, Public Works Committee the month prior. So all of those statements were made at that prior, or at that Public Safety, Public Works Committee, and the committee considered the information that the sheriff provided as well as that Chief Deputy Burrows provided at that committee meeting. Just so everyone's aware that that happened.
Was it also discussed at the committee about the, the, our own rules about addressing, and these did not conform at all?
I don't recall. That might be a better question directed at Ms. McCurdy. I know that Mr. Hacker did make a presentation on whether or not they conformed. I just, I don't want to make a statement that might not be accurate, so I'm not saying one way or another.
I was thinking of two other petitions that have been brought up, and we haven't seen anything on them yet.
I do know that there are no real estate owners on Shady Grove Shores that signed a petition. So our petitions require that all property owners on the road sign the petition in order for it to be compliant with our petition requirements. So that particular road simply is, in and of itself, just not a complete petition. So there's that. Again, as it goes to South Deer Lake Circle, I can't recall what Logan said at the, at the committee.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Well, we'll move on to board action.
Oh, we got, you want to do resolution, discuss thirty-nine, twenty-four, which is the resolution for the issuing of, of the bond, which we talked about during the, every committee with the recommendation of going back on bonding now that the offer money's gone to keep our levy stable and flat. We have it not to exceed two point two five million dollars to move forward with our projects, being that we don't want to spend on our fund balance. As you know, we did pass a deficit budget last year, so that number I show you on the slide, that I'll point out in my presentation, will be going lower at the end of two thousand and twenty-four due to the encumbered funds also. But this is part of the requirement of bonding is to have this resolution to move forward should the board want to, want to continue to bond and stabilize our levy.
What is your request now? You're addressing thirty-nine, twenty-four, and, which is part of the action as a committee as a whole, but yet we haven't acted on the addressing petitions. We think that's that number nine.
We haven't finished number eight yet. Number eight, you added.
We put that in with eight?
Yes, we put that in with eight.
Sorry, yes.
B, C, and D.
I wondered why that other circle was there. All right.
So my question is, on, on the bonding, you have, you have one eight, but we still have the two, two, two fifty on your, on this, the one you're gonna present us. So on page ten of that, it says bonding is only one eight, two four.
Right. Our capacity is two point two. It was a recommendation of Public Works to add that five hundred thousand dollars to another project, which ends up being four seventy-five, I think, on the slide here. That brings us to our max bonding at point two five.
I got two point six, nine, two grand total. Is that not all in on that page ten? I guess I don't know how to read it. If you have bonding at that, then you have a one-ten fund, the levy, recycling, total itself.
If you go to, if you go to.
Where is it?
Page twelve, which is utilizing the recommendations from all the committees, including the broadband funding, you see the bonding now at two point two, four, nine. So it keeps us under our cap of not to exceed that two point two, five, zero.
Okay. What was the other project then? Is it that, for roads?
It was a road project.
A road project at least, okay.
Yes.
The county road E recommendation.
That was the county road E, forty-eight.
The struggle with the Public Safety Committee is we can't really gain on highway infrastructure. Such a costly investment. You know, being we have this opportunity, and I started talking with Don about this probably a year, year and a half ago. You know, in order for us to do anything with that goal, we need to start spending a little money in highway. And so that's why we came up with the county road E project addition, to attempt to meet the goal that's set to highway, improve infrastructure, so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So at the end of this year, we're gonna, you'll be sitting on five million dollars plus a little change.
If we, if we bond, we're sitting on six point nine.
That beats our fifty percent.
That's above and beyond our fifty percent, yeah.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't include the, you know, the five point six. So I guess it's not that I'm against borrowing money. Having said that, they claim that sixty percent of the, sixty percent of Americans can't afford a four hundred dollar emergency. It's less than two tires on my car, and I think with sitting on five million dollars of excess, I think it's incumbent upon us to be a little more, can I say frugal, you know, to, to borrow that much money when we've got what would be seventeen, eighteen million dollars sitting there. And I voted for and I would always support the fifty percent fund balance. I believe we need it. That's eleven million dollars. But when is the, when is over the eleven million dollars enough? I mean, yeah, forget it. It was seven million dollars a year ago. It's, it's five million now. But at the same point, we're sitting on two-thirds of a year's worth of taxes of our taxpayers' money, and, and I think we, I think we need to spend some of that five million dollars and not borrow all of two point two. I, I get it. You know, nobody here would like to see county road I fixed more than me. At the same point, it's a lot of money, and it's coming from, you know, our school districts want more money, our towns want more money, our county wants more money, our recycling wants more money, and at what point does the turnip run dry? And I, I just think, I think we need to look internally and try and find spots to save and, and not borrow all of two point two, five million, especially if, when we were looking at borrowing one point eight. And I get it, our roads are bad, but I, I don't think the finances of the average person in Bull County are all that great either, so my two cents worth.
And one of the other things to remember on trying to maintain that fund balance is our health fund. You know, our health fund right now, we're running, we're budgeting twenty twenty-five at our actuarial, actuarially minimum, they say we should have in that, in that fund. The last couple of years, it's been hit very hard, you know, to the tune of four million dollars in the last couple of years. So we're running very slim, you know, unfortunately, people do get sick with bad things. We're hoping for a better year next year. That's why we're keeping it at our minimum. But if that does have a bad year, it comes back out of that fund balance also. And we had the, again, the deficit budget, so that number will go down again at the end of two thousand and twenty-four because what was encumbered in the two thousand and twenty-four budget above and beyond the balance budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So we bring up the health plan. I mean, are, are we looking at, if, if that's running so low, are we looking at options to outsource our health care?
We're staff, we're staff and our consultants were always looking at those options to see what's a better fit for the county and what's our better long-term range. Right now, being self-funded is, is the best plan. As other counties have got on to other programs where substantially laddered up their costs over years, they, they'll come in low, hit your business, and then really crank it up. So right now, our forecast to be self-funded is our best option.
So is the health care completely funded by the county?
Yes.
Employees pay anything?
Yes, employees pay their share, yes.
Okay.
You know, and there'll be a slight increase on that for their contributions as well, balancing those numbers to try to get where we're at.
I had talked to Don too earlier, just to, because one thing I would like to see is, what is all of our debt? I know it's staggered over years how it's being repaid, but it would be interesting to see that, so we know what our overall debt is and what that, because I know our debt service number and the budget here is around two million, but what would that, so that debt service number is two million for the debt we have today? Or, no, that would include the, would that include that debt service number? Does it, I didn't ask you that.
I could, got that from the archives. Would you like me to report on that?
Sure.
So we've got the, the general note, about two million, eight fifty outstanding final payments in two thousand and twenty-seven, and we've got five point seven, five point eight million dollar note, final payment in two thousand and thirty-two. Our total principal outstanding right now is eight, six, eight point six million. That being fully retired by two thousand and thirty-two, million, almost three million will be retired in two thousand and twenty-seven. And so each year, we create more bonding capacity to stay at that, you know, roughly two million dollar repayment number. That's, that's capacity that you can use to do projects that meet your objectives in terms of your priorities.
Go ahead. Getting back to that bonding, Steve, you have, I don't have figures here now, but what triggered that at our Public Works recommendation was we had, and we looked at county road E, and the increase in price in blacktop and, and labor and everything else to get a project done far exceeded what we, we looked at what we could have done last year if we would have bonded last year. And so that opportunity is gone. And so the figures that we had at that public service meeting, Steve, maybe you knew a little more about that.
Yeah, I mean, I believe it's a million dollars total project, wasn't it?
Little over a million dollars.
Yes. So we're looking to, you know, use some of that bonding for half the project. He's been on the docket for a long time, but it's a large project, and we've seen an opportunity to maybe finally get it done. The numbers seem to jive for us. We understand where Mr. Olson's coming from, too, but there's not a better time than now to borrow money. It just isn't, it isn't any better. So that's why the committee pushed for it to get it, try and get it done.
So how long a stretch of road?
Stretch of road, it's. Eight miles up to W.
Eight, six or something?
Forty-eight to W.
McKinley. Four and a half miles.
Is it four and a half?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And that's on, and then we still have county road B on there, too.
County road B is still on there. That's got B L L money, federal money on it.
Okay.
With that, historically with, with highway, their, their construction program has been funded at about two million, one point nine to two point one million dollars, you know, not that many years ago, that was able to get us almost thirty to thirty-five miles of, of pavement done with chip seals and paving, whether it's overlays and all rising and those type items. Right now, that same program with the two million dollars gets you around fifteen miles. Including chip seals and stuff, so your maintenance is changing as you're, you're putting less treatment on there and not as thick as that wall.
That's what our inflation does.
So is there other money on county road E other than this million?
On E, not at this time, no.
So are we just overlaying it?
Set for a pulverize and pave. The commissioner then would have to add the second half into a CIP program to finish the project next year. Projects following here.
I just wanted to go back to Brad's question. I brought up county road I, and we'd have to go back to the commi, administrator. I was gonna say commissioner, but administrator, and I was in the near future, so then I told you E, but I wouldn't tell them. I don't remember what you gave me on the date. It was twenty-five or twenty-six or something.
Twenty-seven. After, after the bridge is done.
Yep. That was our goal, and we had it, I believe it was put in for a county highway improvement program supplement grant we got for that, for an extra three hundred and ninety-three thousand to help with that project. Just have to come up with the rest in this program.
Anybody else? You all, still at the committee as a whole? And are we on?
You want to jump to C?
To C from?
Resolution forty, twenty-four is the resolution for, to adopt a special charge for recycling of five dollars. With that, to basically make the recycling center independent on running to get things accomplished. Right now, we looked at, you know, thirty, forty, or thirty-five dollars where that lands, and we keep thirty-five, we did analysis for five years on where that would lie us to get our new equipment on the facility and estimate commodities forecast out, or state aids where they are at the end of two thousand and twenty-nine. The thirty-five dollars would net us right around eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year, that special fee, which would relieve about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax levy to move into other operations of the, of the county to pay for operations. Going through our, our CIP for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight with our new equipment and trucks, the net of that would be forecasted, that fund would have three hundred and five thousand dollars in it in two thousand and twenty-nine. So it wouldn't be, and after that, it should grow a little quicker, and at that point, then the board could lower that fee right now. And if you recall in my presentation right now, our mill rate's dropping twenty-six cents per thousand with that. So looking at that, we did that and came up with that plan to help shift because levy, levy for operations is always our big pinch point of where that comes from, because something has to suffer on that. And this is something that should have been done in nineteen eighty-nine when the recycling center was first done to implement a, a fee for this to, to have it stand on its own versus having the levy have to cover that. So that was what proposed. It was recommended by Public Works, Public Safety to move that forward to the board with the thirty-five dollars. So that's where that stands.
Go ahead, start.
So once again, another tax, another fee. I think I pay Waterman's great plenty to take my garbage away in a few weeks, and I just don't see if the. I guess only government can make an entity stand on its own two feet. If the recycling center can stand on its own two feet, that's fine. If not, let's figure out a way to make it stand on its own two feet without posing the taxpayers again. I mean, this is a bill that just keeps coming on and on and on in my taxes, and I'll be honest, I've never drove in the recycling center. Waterman's takes everything away. And I, I think to put this on, everybody who has ever done any improvement on a, on a piece of property somewhere, and, and it's, at the end of the day, unending. And, and yes, it can go down, but guess what? It can go up, too. And there again, I, I think we're back to just how much can we squeeze out of the taxpayers? And, and I think it's time we figure out how to squeeze less out of the taxpayers and more out of what we're getting for, for our money.
Anybody else?
And I've talked to several people in my area in the city of St. Clair regarding this, and most, almost everyone in the city already pays for recycling, so it's kind of a kick in the backside to have to pay another fee for something they don't use because they're already paying for it. And I, like I had said before, I, I mean, that recycling center, I'd love to see that recycling center look decent, run decent, but I, I don't know that we can expect. But I, I don't know that we can expect people that don't use it to have to pay a, a tax, another tax for something they don't use. Um, it, that's, I mean, I mean, I know, I know it's a little bit, it's $35 a year, but I, just, just what I've heard from the people that I've spoken to about it. Like myself, I have Watermans, they take everything. I don't have to pay for another fee for recycling. So it's, you know, something that just another tax that I have to pay. So that's, that's a concern when you're paying taxes for stuff you don't even use.
Brad?
So I have a couple of questions, um, one of which is, is you've been paying for it, everybody's been paying for it. This changes how you pay for it. So instead of it being in the levy and part of the levy, it's a special charge instead. So I'm not on the Gen Gov Committee that has addressed this, but it's my understanding the intent of making this an enterprise fund was to make it stand on its own two feet and also to free up some levy for other needs the county might have. So it's not really a new charge. What's changed is how you're paying it and then you're paying more if we use that $300,000 on something else for the county. Then in total, we are paying more. So there's a couple of different ways, you know, to look at this. The other question I have is when this becomes an enter, an enterprise fund, I sent questions about the staff there. So, um, will there be, uh, kind of related but unrelated as additional staff with the improvements to it? And the role of the endeavor folks there, but is the staff, uh, um, compensation going to be tied to how this, how the recycling center performs? How, how does that work?
Right now we're looking at, um, two different ways, whether it, with the auditors, whether it's best to set it up as an enterprise fund or just a dedicated fund.
Dedicated fund.
With, with that. So, um, uh, when the Lime Quarry was there, the Lime Quarry is kind of similar. That rolled over, that rolled, I mean, the employees raises rolled with the county raises. The only one that has been separated out was GAM. That, uh, they handle their raises, uh, from within with the enterprise fund.
Oh, okay.
So, um, we've been wait, we've been working with the auditors on the best way to set that up. Um, that works the best with the, with the county.
Okay. And that's the question that I had. So thank you for answering that.
Johnny? Excuse me. I brought this up at the budget hearing in the town of Farmington last Monday night. And they, uh, they, all their recycle goes through the county recycle. They bring the dumpsters down and everything. And the town has a charge, uh, they have a, uh, another one size bag for $3 a bag and another one for $5 a bag. And I told them, well, in our, in your budget numbers here, I said it probably we're going to have this change in the recycle. And they, they understood that very well and, and they said, well, that would be made up and they'd have to increase the charge for the people that use it. And as, as far as, uh, some of these things that are, that are set charge that we don't, it's like, you know, we're a senior citizen and our, our, our biggest charge is to our school tax and, yeah. So the seniors and a lot of people can say, well, we don't have money in school. But it's, we know that it's something that, that, uh, we have to do.
Um, that's the first I've heard of that, that they're charging to use our, use our recycling, uh, charging their residents to use our recycling bin when our ordinance is, says it's free for residences.
They, they charge a, a bag.
Correct.
There's an attendant there, you know.
Right. And we pay, and we pay for the attendant. We pay the attendant fee out of the recycling. But if they're charging people to use, bring bags there of recycled, our ordinance says it's free to our residents, our residents.
You sure that's not garbage? Their garbage isn't, is that garbage pickup, like garbage pickup? Cause Centuria would charge for bags for a long time.
Is that, is that the Farmington, uh, that a Farmington, uh, site where we have our town hall and that? People come on, on Saturdays.
But is it recycle or is it garbage that they're putting, that they're paying for?
There is recycle bins and then there's the garbage bags.
And the bags are for garbage.
The bags are for garbage.
Where does that go?
I would hope so, yeah, because we don't, we don't take care of refuge.
Pick it up there.
Okay. Just to clear that up.
And then the first Saturday of every month, I think, I think that's who Waterman's. They have a huge, uh, either one or two big, uh, bays where people can bring in anything, tires or, or, uh, old furniture and whatever. It, it saves the people from dumping stuff in the ditches and, and it, it's very well, very well done and paid for.
Anybody else? Steve? Okay, uh, resolution 4124 is on at the committee's.
Uh, this was, this resolution was moved forward and, um, recommended as part of the budget of reassigning those broadband, uh, funds that have been sitting there. There's $800,000 left there. It's basically saying, you know, we're declaring victory as we have 93% of our county ditch, uh, county with, um, high speed internet in the ditches. Uh, versus the state average of 58 or 53. Um, the recommendation coming out of that was to use part of the, the, the funding of this uh, for the grandstand project, 650,000. It was originally at 700,000. Uh, we kind of changed that number around as the estimate for the grandstand project has a very large contingency built into it. A couple hundred thousand, so we dropped that down. Um, there's not a lot of unknowns. Building a grandstand is, if there is, modeling an existing building. Um, the other use of that money would be $150,000 then towards the county rural repair. Recommended by Public Works Public Safety. Um, so that's just reallocating those funds for, uh, capital projects.
Okay. Any questions in regards to that?
Just one.
Go ahead, Brad.
How come? Cause my concern was it was worthwhile infrastructure projects, but I mean, those weren't listed in it. It was just infrastructure. In the resolution itself.
We put it in those words basically to give the the board the leeway to either identify those, um, purposely in the resolution of broadband and the grandstand. Or to reassign them and then set the use for them at a later date if you go a different route. Just giving you more flexibility. It's funding, it's funds.
Does it change our status as a broadband community?
We're still broadband forward.
Okay.
And moving that 800,000 to these projects doesn't change the amount that we would bond?
Correct.
Anybody else have any other questions?
If there's any questions, I'm going to go back into.
Well, okay. We'll go back into open session for any possible action regarding uh, rural addressing. Resolution 3924, 40, 44, 4124. Would that be the motion?
Yes.
No.
So you just moved to go back into open session. We would move on to, uh, topic number nine. The other resolutions are still down after talking about the budget. So we would hit on the rural addressing and then we would go into the closed session if, if the board wants to.
Hit on addressing, what about move 3924? They were moved.
Just for discussion.
Just for discussion.
Discussion only. Okay.
Make a motion to deny the two petitions.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to get a second?
Go back, get a second to open back into open session.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go to, uh, close session.
Nope.
Oh, nine, geez.
Mr. Chair on number nine.
Action on the addressing petition.
Chair, make a motion that we deny the two petitions regarding the rural address system.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah. Is it just the two?
That's the only two that we have.
Today.
Okay.
Petitions on now.
Don't worry.
Rest of them are done. Any more discussion? Go ahead, Doug.
Um, it was said on Shady Grove Shores that there were no signatures at all.
Right.
Correct. So Shady Grove Shores was put forward as a petition, uh, that included a lot of other roads. The other roads were already tied up in a previous petition. So those roads were removed from the petition and those roads had some signatures from property owners. However, Shady Grove Shores had no property owners that signed that full petition. So it was included in a petition with no property owners signing the petition.
How about South Deer Lake Circle?
South Deer Lake Circle had at least some property owners sign it. Again, I can't specifically recall. I think all of the property owners signed the petition. But, um, I can't say that definitively. I can't. I, I don't recall.
Do you think on that one, Deer Lake Circle, that all, that there was 100% or not 100%?
I think there was 100% signatures of property owners. But
You remember, Steve?
If my recollection serves, there were issues with the As and Bs.
As and Bs on it.
It had a lot of As and Bs and it had two lots that were privately owned, but could be divided. So that's where that comes in later. Somebody builds there and then you got ABC. So.
Okay.
Beats the requirement for the ordinance because of the vacant lots that are on it at this time.
Additionally, I would ask the board in voting to take into consideration all of the testimony that you heard from the sheriff at the prior board meeting as well as, uh, taking into consideration the fact that both of them, both the sheriff and the chief deputy, uh, made statements at the committees, um, basically asking the board to support the ordinance and stating that from their perspective, uh, enforcing the ordinance would make it easier for them to find properties. So that, that's really the underlying factor to take into consideration and they are the subject matter experts. So I would ask the board to take that into consideration.
That's been clear all along. Any more discussion? Okay. You want to, uh, roll call or, uh?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Karen Kelly?
And what we're
To deny the two petitions regarding the rural addressing ordinance.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall?
No.
Tony Johnson?
Yes.
Jay Luke?
Yes.
Francis Dunkinson?
Yes.
Russ Arcand?
Yes.
Keith Karpinski?
Yes.
Tom Bonnaprise?
No.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
No.
Steve Warrenal?
Yes.
Pamela Garvey?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Yes.
And Dan Ruck?
No.
Five noes and 10 yeses.
Okay. Need a motion for closed session, number 10.
Make a motion, we move to the closed session.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to go into closed session. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay, there.
Now, we will consider number 11A, presentation of our proposed budget.
Evening, everyone.
You got two minutes.
We got two minutes. Not too much has changed in this, just a little bit. We've been tightening numbers as we go here every day. Thanks to staff and Don and Sherry and their group, directors and partners, working on numbers. Moving forward, so here we are, October 15. Discussion with the full board, public hearing on November 12. Hopefully tonight, we'll have a solid budget that we won't have any technical amendments coming in November to change things that we already have. This is where we stand, $64.5 million. And that slightly down from 2020, slightly up from 2024, but the levy is down from 2024, or about $71,000. Rate down about 26 cents per thousand. Next slide. Again, the levy at 23 million, down 71,000, a decrease of three tenths of a percent. Our FTE count is currently at, proposed at 397, it'll go to 400. If the, the three deputies are approved with the budget, the FTE count will go up to 400.716. The board, and then the budget allows us to invest in the four priorities, infrastructure and keeping our levy stable. Next slide. Outside agencies. This is where, my slide. Our five-year CIP, you see the unfunded amount right here. That matches what the requests are for the AFRs and everything to encompass the bonding funding. That will solve that one. But it shows the items for IT, the expenditures, the vehicles, the other capital outlay, road projects and facility projects with that. Next slide. Okay, outside agency, originally you saw this, one of the things that was recommended by general government, if you recall, a couple of years ago. Several years ago, they took 10,000 from tourism and gave it to economic developments. Currently, tourism has a new board, a different strategic plan to bring more people to the county versus concentrating on the brick and mortar down there at the off-ramp at Highway 8. So the recommendation was to reduce economic development by 5,000 and put it to tourism. With that, keeping our number the same as was presented to the committees, just shifting 5,000 from economic development to. Tourism council.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So it says 75,000, but it said last year they got 60,000.
Correct, and their, their, their request was 90,000.
Yeah.
I only approved of that 70,000 because it was the first year with their new council.
Okay.
They brought back proposals about their new budget plan.
I've seen.
And so that, that's why the 5,000 was moved to add to that.
Okay.
Next slide, next slide. These were the AFRs that were approved by all the committees, the extra funding request of 0.37 million, three years approved by all the committees. It does include the $600,000 for the bleachers or grandstand, assuming the, the other funding goes through also with the reallocation of the broadband stuff. Next slide.
About the sheriff, he's that hard on cars. Sit over there, he didn't say anything.
You gotta get there quick.
How many squads is that?
Hit a deer a couple of weeks ago.
How many squads is that? 156,000.
Three.
Three.
Three. Normally we'd get eight to nine, this year we're trying to extend some of the cars. We used to pay 25,000 for brand-new Dodge Ram cars. Then COVID hit, and now they're 50,000 to 55,000. There's no municipal break anymore or discount on those. This is the operating requests that were recommended by committees, but approved includes the three FTE patrol deputies, the light R, two wage adjustments, and then the two changes in grade that were approved at the committee levels. Next slide. Again, this, this first slide shows the bonding at the 1.8. This one does not include the extra that was recommended by Public Works Public Safety for the County E project, which brings us up to our bonding cap of 2.25 million that we'd like to stay at. Next slide. These are the options for the board that were considered, and this is where we talked about the grandstand utilizing 650,000 of reallocating broadband money. And then the county E repair, 425,000 for bonding and 150,000 out of the broadband allocation using up that $800,000. One of the options I would have mentioned before was to be determined whether we wanted to move forward with these recycling equipment. We wouldn't have to do that if we have the recycling fee, we would be on schedule with that. And then ADRC, put in there $50,000 for the Meals on Wheels program, which after the Milltown Community Center burnt down, that program is struggling since January through July this year, they've done 93,000 meals out of there. So this was looking at putting a central kitchen in the endeavors building and having the clients help with that. And then also have another renter over there to help us recuperate our, our costs over there. Next slide. So with those projects in there, the, the bleachers and the recycling, or excuse me, E repairs, bringing us to our bonding cap of 2.25 million. I'm utilizing the broadband fund, the ones they fund is our internal loan fund. Departments use and pay back that money over five years in their budget. Levees, 100 and, or 320,000. And remember on page 19 of the budget book, I think it's still page 19, it shows that dollar of where, where, where your levy dollars go. You know, and, and what is our allocation of those levies dollars. Next slide. This is how it would look if we don't do bonding, we have an income rebalance of 6.9 million. If we don't bond and we want to do all our projects, we're running it down to 5 million. But remember again, we did, we passed a deficit budget last year. $1.9 million for 2024, so that number will go down at the end of the year, depending on how those projects come in and roll over. Also, we have our health fund out there, which we again are right at our actual minimum in 2025. Over that, we don't have to get to replenish that fund.
Health fund.
What's that?
We're not taking any more money out of there then.
No, we are not taking.
We're drawing it down.
It's drawn down.
It's down from what, 7 million down to 4?
Almost 8 million down to our actuary minimum, which is.
2.3 million.
2.3 million.
So he drew it down that fast?
That fast, and that's due to high claims.
Okay.
By, unfortunately, people that needed the, the assistance.
Need a higher minimum in there that we'll, we'll build it back up?
We'll build it back up, you, you want to explain that, Don?
Each year, we address that with our, the actuaries, our consultancy, and it could move up or move down. We did get some high-cost folks in different situations with health this last year, so we are somewhat optimistic about future years. We've been spinning down really, really fast, and we hope that stabilizes.
So, but do we want, what's, the 2.5 is our kind of minimum right now yet, or should we go up higher?
Well.
I mean, that policy-wise or something, should we be up at 3, 3.5?
I think before, we went further than we wanted with the amount of money in the health fund. And so we're trying to kind of get the plane level in the air, and the actuarial number that we just quoted is what the actuaries think we ought to be at.
At the 2.5?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
We just had a big delay.
So if, if we come in, if we, if 2025 is a good year, that's great, well, we're, we're good to go. But if, if 2025 is a bad year with a lot of claims, high claims, unfortunately, then we'd have to look at raising that at that point for 2026. That covered. We put the bonding, we just maintain, we maintain our budget, our, our fund balance at the 6.9 million. Bonding is very good right now to save us money and keep our levy stable. And it also, I mean, that we'll make more money than going into our savings account doing that. So makes good sense to keep us on that plan. It does allow us in the future to continue to use the bonding mechanism to keep our capital projects moving without having to sacrifice operating expense, so. Next slide. And that's it, I tried to keep it to two minutes, I'm sure I went over that, but. Yes, Brad.
So I gotta go back to County Road E again, four and a half miles and a million dollars. That's pulverizing, paving, striping, shouldering, new culverts, the whole works.
Correct.
All right, oh wait, let's see.
Well, that means eyes gonna be.
What happens to the three positions for the sheriff if, how are they being funded?
The sheriff department is right now, right now, we went for a grant for that, to cover half of that for the first five years.
Right.
Currently, that, that grant did not, was not successful. The sheriff might want to speak on that, they're looking at different revenue items, and I think Don and Brent, if you want to talk on that, they have that covered for. If I have my notes correct.
For one of the positions, we're funding it partly through DNR grants and through outsourcing, some of the lake associations wanted us to, wanted a contract with us for boat patrol and some other lake projects or like services, so we're trying to fund it that way.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure we're not going to eliminate them in any way, shape or form.
Correct.
So it's important they. So it's important they stay in, I guess is what I'm.
Yes, it is important, and, and they've got a, a plan to fund those positions and looking at future funding for, for stable, keeping them positioned.
So, I'm just, on the on and covered the almost 7 million dollars, could we, do we have time to do some more roads or start on roads? Can we pick more, or, 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 for, for road projects? Say we took a, a million dollars out of there for another road to, before it gets worse. Because every road we let go would cost that much more to fix, but I mean, is there some overlays or anything that we could do?
Could we?
Yeah.
Yes. There, there's more.
Take it out of there.
There's more need, there's more need than funding.
Correct.
But what's happened in the past is, as you look at these things, and that's why a county road E at, you know, you're, you're, you're pushing 225 to 250,000 a mile, you know, to make that road last, you know? If you can do the same project and, and put it down, pulverize and pave to replace the culverts, you can slim it down to 200,000 a mile and only put two inches down, but it's not going to last as long down in the future. You know, you want that thick mat to get, get there and get us out there. You'll notice that on federal projects as we use, as we use our highway funds, county funds to pave a road and do a pulverized pave at three inches, where I use federal funds and pave County Road M in three lifts at five and a half inches. And you'll see the difference big time at 10 years, 12 years, and, you know, you're probably not even touching that road yet. Where our county ones, as we try to stretch our dollars and keep that moving. My goal is always with the construction maintenance fund is to touch, you know, 10% of the roads. So in 10 years, you're back on there, whether it's a chip seal or a thin overlay or something like that, but it's a plan going forward.
Do it right.
Do, would we, and we could also have the option, instead of bonding 2.5 million, 2, 2.5 million, we could take a million out of that unfunded, unencumbered balance and only bond a million and a half. That's, something like that would be an option too, right?
It is an option. The, the issue you will have with that, with the levy, you're going to drop the levy the next cycle a little more, where you're going to stick down, you're going to lower that, that borrowing capacity down to that next level again. So you're, if you want to do more projects in the future of anything, then you're going to raise the levy. That's right, we want to keep that at that 2.2 million in our five-year CIP plan. We're able to utilize that between all the departments, highway facilities, and rotate those projects to keep that 2.2 moving forward to accomplish all those things.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Yeah, I think, you know, you always have to have that cushion, that bonding, you know, that's, I, I realize what you're saying, Sharon. It, but, you know, you need it in case you need to really have, if you have a big problem, you can, you can bank on it. You, if you borrow less and then change the levy, it works in reverse.
As a long-term planning strategy, you know, right now, the highway construction program is, is $2 million in levy. At some point, where our levy only goes up 320,000, employee costs go up much quicker than that. At some point, we'll need to, to maintain that and maintain our workforce and our programs, supplement levy dollars. Those capital projects and highway that are currently funded by levy, they can be funded by bonding every year and then move that operating cost to keep staffing levels where we need to be.
Okay, Don, last Q. Anybody else? I would like to, did you want something else?
I just have one quick question. We're still not going to levy what our capacity is, correct?
We're using all our capacity.
We are using it.
Yes.
That was just a quick question. I'm all done.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go into possible action for outside agencies, B.
This is where you can make the motion for a closed session discussion.
In reference to close this, Russ.
Sir.
I move to direct the administrator and staff to engage in further negotiations with fair society along the terms discussed in our closed session.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, everybody understand it? Any objections? Or any discussion other than that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign. Okay, we got you.
And I, and this is where we need the motion to approve the, the slide I showed you on outside agencies for funding that was presented.
Make a motion to approve funding outside agencies based on the presentation.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, sign. Any other outside agency that need attention? Okay, possible action regarding additional funding requests.
This would be the motion to approve the funding requests as presented that were recommended by the committees and presentation.
I move to accept that as presented. Motion made and seconded to approve the, the requests as presented.
The additional requests?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we ask questions here?
Oh, yeah.
Community referral agency, we gave them 6,000 last year, and now we're taking that, we're not giving them anything this year.
They didn't request.
They didn't request anything? Okay. I did, I wonder if that was.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I pose same sign. Well, let's see, wherever we might.
13.
12.
Wow.
Well, we have Resolution 3824 to contend with.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 38-24, the resolution to hold a public hearing under 2025 county budget proposal.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. You approve it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Confirmation appointments made by County Board Chairman.
You see, 24.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, we didn't move on them. 3924.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
This will, this will take a 75, or a quarter vote, or three-quarter percent to approve.
Will that have to be a roll call then?
Yes. Okay. Any, just any more discussion other than what we've already gone through on it? Roll call.
Jeremy Hall. Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson.
Yes.
Russ Arcand.
Yes.
Keith Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
No.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wornall.
Yes.
Pamela Garvey.
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
And Sharon Kelly.
No.
So that is three noes and 12 yeses. Just barely, exactly enough to pass.
Okay, Resolution 4024, adopt special charges for recycling.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 40-24 to adopt a special charge for recycling.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Resolution 4024.
This is a majority vote.
Like a roll.
So is there an end date on this? Cause it doesn't seem as though there is one.
Currently, there's not an end date on it.
Roll call was called for.
Kim O'Connell.
No.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson.
Yes.
Russ Arcand.
Yes.
Keith Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
No.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wornall.
Yes.
Pamela Garvey.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
No.
Sharon Kelly.
No.
And Jeremy Hall.
No.
That's nine yeses and six noes for passive majority.
Resolution 4124, unused funds from the broadband.
Motion to approve.
Made and.
I'll second.
Seconded and to approve.
This one is two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Roll call. Or any discussion, more discussion? Roll call.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson.
Yes.
Russ Arcand.
Yes.
Keith Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
No.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wornall.
Yes.
Pamela Garvey.
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
And Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
That one also passes with more than two-thirds.
Confirmation of appointments by the county board, there are none. Confirmations by the county administrator.
I have none.
None. County board, I have really everything that we've been involved in has been discussed quite thoroughly, actually. So I have nothing additional to report. Administrator reports.
Real quickly, we are, we have letters out for the library committee that will do their next five-year plan. Those applications are due November 4th. Once that's done, Supervisor Dunkinson will chair that committee, going forward with that, with recommendations on that one. And then I just want to thank staff and everyone, department head and directors on their help with the budget and the committees for their work on the budgets to this point, so that's all I have for report.
Okay. Any supervisor reports? Okay, Russ?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I am, aye.